If everyone please have an education and pledge allegiance to Commissioner Ross.
Let's pray. Gracious Father, we are blessed to be here today, Lord. We thank you, Father, for this gathering today, Lord. We just pray that you would guide our steps and our decisions as we do things, Lord, to enhance our county and make life greater for our citizens. So, we ask you your blessing upon this meeting in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the mother which sustains one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time I would like to call the regular meeting of the Gates County Board of Commissioners for August 1st, 2018 to order. Thank you Commissioner Freeman for coming. Have we not heard anything from Commissioner Jordan? That all is concerning. Okay, first item of business is approval of minutes. We had a special meeting on June 26th, 2018, a regular meeting on July 2nd, 2018, and a regular meeting on July 16th, 2018. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Here none. Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
A move.
Second.
There it goes, the first and the second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, the minutes are approved. Next item on agenda is approval of the agenda. At this time I would like to add to new business budgets, Amendment 6 and 7. 6 and 7, we have been, you've seen those on our email, 6 and 7. And also number 9, the GITS safety policy. And number 9, GITS safety policy. Okay, at this time do I have a motion to approve the agenda as modified?
So move. Second.
Motion's been made a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, next item, moving right along. Next item, the Roman Report's delegations. I believe we do have a Knights delegation from Alamo Hope Line. We are certainly looking forward to your presentation.
Good morning Commissioners, and I want to thank Ms. Natalie Rowntree and Gates County Commissioners for allowing me a few moments to introduce myself and reacclimate you to Alamo Hope Line. I've spent many a day here in Gates County canoeing, fishing, and camping over at Merchant Mill Pond. And with the weather the last two weeks, I'm very happy to see that all of Gates County is a part of Merchant Mill Pond. So, wasn't surprised coming over. So, let me introduce myself. I'm the new, by two and a half months so far, Executive Director and CEO of Alamo Hope Line. I come with 20-plus, I'm not going to date myself too much, but 20-plus years of experience in commercial, government, specifically defense contracting, and nonprofit experience. My MBA comes from the University of Massachusetts. My undergrad is from the University of Pittsburgh. Not Pitt, but the other Pitt, of Pennsylvania. Yes, if you dig too far you'll find that I'm a Steelers fan and a Pirates and Penguins, but goes with the territory. Six years ago, I came to my final home, and we're not leaving, so I guess we're one of those kind of Yankees, but South Mills has become home. And we love it. We are the very last street in South Mills. It's almost Pasquett County where we are, so we are dead end into the swamp. And I wouldn't change it or trade it for anything. It's home. Blackwater is actually what brought me to South Mills. So, when I mentioned defense contracting, I chose a very interesting one to work for to move my family and everything down to this area, but again, I wouldn't change it for anything. Hope Line is a 180-degree turn from Blackwater, but it is also providing safety, security, and defense for people who can't, in a lot of cases, do that for themselves. So, there is a direct connection to that, but it is significantly different from what I used to do. Now, into what Hope Line is. Hope Line is a private nonprofit organization that offers comprehensive services for victims and survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault. We serve the six counties of the Alamo. Those counties are Camden, Chawan, Currituck, Gates, while I'm presenting to you this morning, Pasquett, and Requiem. Now, you do contribute to Hope Line, and I greatly thank you for that. I hope this is a relationship we can continue for at least my next 20 or 30 years, and I plan to be at the helm. And you may know a little bit about Hope Line. I hope you do. In fact, Hope Line is one of the most well-known secrets in the Alamo. We're a secret, a well-known secret for many reasons. We've been in existence and serving victims and survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault for nearly 40 years. So, for an organization, a nonprofit organization, that's a pretty good track record that we've done this for 40 years. It's an amazing feat in some big shoes I need to fill from the past director who was in that role for about 36 of those years, 32 of the 37 years we've had the existence. We've helped tens of thousands of residents of the Alamo here in Gates, in Pasquett, in Requiem, throughout the six counties we serve. Tens of thousands of people have been served by Alamo Hope Line, and I'll talk about the programs that we work with them. So, you can understand why this is, it's a secret, but it's a very open secret. People know what we are, and most of you, if you do know us, you know that we have a shelter, and then we have a thrift store. They're very important to the picture, but they're just a piece of the puzzle. I will start with those because they're the known, and they're the easiest thing to kind of get through quickly. So, the shelter, we have a nine-room facility that we can fit up to 36 individuals, but really, we reserve those for families. So, we have overflow with local business partners and different other nonprofits that we can contribute our services and we can buddy up with. But really, our thing is we try to get them in our facility because we provide a safe, secure place for people to recover and get right again. Our facility is very clean, modern, you know, not that we're promoting it like a hotel, but we do have cable TV, Wi-Fi, the amenities. They're not going into a prison cell. They're going into a very livable situation to help get them out of a dangerous situation. So, when I mention the correlations of Blackwater, it's moving people from danger to safety, and that's exactly what Hope Line does. Beyond just providing a roof over these survivors' heads, we provide mediums. So, the grants and appropriations like we receive from Gates County, that goes to help feeding the people that we do shelter. We feed them 365 days a year, three square meals a day, snacks in between. We give them grocery cards, so it's not us saying, here's what you have to eat. We actually provide grocery cards so they can go out and choose what they want. We provide transportation back and forth to local grocery stores so that they get exactly what they need to help them through this period. But that roof over their head and the security in our building that is a secure facility, that really helps them have the mental calmness that they can begin to heal. The other one thing that we do, and it is very useful because our sign's out front and people do shop there, is our thrift shop. Now, the thrift shop, you might not know why it exists. It's a store, you know, stores exist to make money. Well, yes, that's part of it, but really, there's three main reasons why the thrift shop exists. One, the thrift shop exists because a lot of people in our area, it's mostly a poor rural area, a lot of people, Walmart might be an expensive trip. So, we have the thrift shop to open our doors to the community that's a little less fortunate than most of the folks in the room, so that they can buy the necessities of life, buy their kids toys, get them new clothing, maybe get themselves clothing. So, that's one of the functions of the store. Another function is the profit aspect of it. Any proceeds, any donations that do go to the thrift shop stay here at the Alamo. We don't pick up the best stuff and send it up to Virginia because it'll make more money. We actually just take it from receiving it at the door from you, and then we put it on the wraps to sell to your neighbors, your friends, maybe even back to yourself. I shopped there, found some great little knacks and things. We bought a bunch of art frames made in Hawaii, so I guess we're going to be painting this this winter, so we have some projects lined up. But fantastic finds, but it does serve that feature to the folks that can't afford more than that. Any of the proceeds that we get go toward the direct services function of what we do as an organization. So, remember that, direct services, because that's the next part of us. But the third feature of the thrift store, and this is probably the most important in my mind, is that as we get folks that show up at the shelter, a lot of them run out of the house with clothes on their back. They don't have time to stop and pack a suitcase or pack some toiletries. They're running, and a lot of times running for their life. So, we have a store that our community generously gives us items to sell, but instead of selling them to these folks that are in danger, we give them to them. And whether it's clothes, whether it's toys for the kids, whether it's houseware stuff that they're trying to start a new home, we provide all these free of charge to them. In fact, all the services I'm going to talk about today, we provide free of charge to these victims and survivors. So, everything we do, we're able to do through local, state, federal grants, anything we receive from our counties that we do serve and individuals. So, we won't take anywhere where there's money coming in. I'm glad to say thank you and then, you know, receive that stuff. But I did mention direct services a couple times, and this is really the bulk of what we do, but most people don't know these services. So, the direct services, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, five I'll talk about. Number one, being counseled. We don't just get people a place to shelter or storm. We actually provide some services, direct services, in-house, on staff, counseling, to help them understand the situation that they're in, understand it's not right. Because for a lot of folks, they don't understand that being beat upon or even financially abused is not right. So, we help educate and let them understand that any type of abuse is not the right situation to be in. We help train them and give them understanding of those signs that are escalations, and also how to deal with the situation. We have counselors, licensed counselors, licensed social workers, and even licensed substance abuse counselors, all on staff. Unfortunately, too many times, a lot of these folks are fighting a multi-front war, so we do have the substance abuse on, on staff, daily, we're there. Another, the second big topic, we do court advocacy. And you probably, if you've ever been here for actual courts, you've probably seen our court advocates here. We serve all six counties, and in court advocacy, we help with protective order filings and emergency restraint, all these things. We have lawyers on retainer. They graciously take a huge payback to work with us because that's what we can afford, but they offer their actual legal aid service, their licensed bar legal services. But we also have our on-staff court advocates that even if it's just to sit there and hold a woman or man, because there are men and victims that we do work with, to hold their hand when they're up here in court in a scary place being all alone, and usually, these people are dealing with the most depressing, saddening, hardest time of their life, they're someone to hold their hands, shoulder to cry on. So, we do offer those services, but the court advocacy does tie in with our on-staff and the lawyers that we retain. Third, and this really ties in with the store and what I talked about with future plans, but Power to Improve Program. This program is one of the best things that I think we do, and I'm really going to put some juice behind this in the next year, next two years, three years. But Power to Improve Program helps people that we're working with as clients get necessary skills to go back into the community and begin contributing as a taxpayer and as a contributing citizen in our communities, all six communities. So, this program helps people that, if they didn't finish high school, well, we help them get their GED, whether that's from paying the fees for the testing, or even getting them testing assistance for learning assistance, we'll work with that. Dr. Weiner's here this morning with us from the College of the Alamo. We actually work with College of the Alamo. And we have programs where if they graduated high school, but they need the next level, the next step, one of the big programs we work with the COA on is with the Certified Nurse Assistant, CNA program. So, we could take someone that maybe never worked in their life, and in, what, two months, I believe, under two months, we can get them as a licensed certified nurse assistant and get them out working, a decent job. And these jobs are in demand. So, this Power to Improve Program is vital to what we do, to not just help people and give them a roof and some food, but also to get them ready to step out and do their own thing. I put these two together because they are together, but outreach and prevention are part of these direct services. Outreach is what I'm doing this morning. I'm presenting to you, explaining, introducing myself, and really explaining Hope Line so you have a good understanding when you see me throughout the year at different events, because I will be in Gates County for different events. But you can come up, if you have anyone you need to refer to me, you know, I want to make sure that you have my information. But this is outreach. Prevention are things where we have onsite, on-staff, again, a team that goes out to schools, to faith-based organizations, to civic groups. Last week, I presented to the Freemasons on Monday at our district meeting, and then Friday I presented to the Rotary in Elizabeth City. So, you know, we get in front of these different civic groups and present and talk about what Hope Line does and how we do it. In fact, Scott Powell, I ran into him this morning, he was at one of my meetings, this past week, so I said, now, are you coming to this? You might get the same speech twice, but here's a state that you need to get, so it's not the same as that. So, that's outreach and prevention. And then, we do run in-house, on-staff, this is our people, our counselors, our social workers. We run a 24/7, 365 crisis line. So, if someone's having an abusive situation happening, they can pick up the phone, call us, and reach one of us anytime, anywhere. Unfortunately, you know, this stuff does happen. It doesn't happen nine to five. It quite often happens 10:00 PM until 3:00 AM on weekends, on holidays, but we're stacked and we're there. Hope Line is there to help people that need it, help people in Gates County and all the other counties we do serve. So, they are the prime focuses and the beyond just shelter and beyond just the thrift store. That's what Hope Line's doing for the counties that we serve. Coming up, you know, this is my second and a half month. As I go forward, I'm beginning to get out and do many more of these, but really, I'm putting some emphasis back in these programs. So, as I mentioned, that Power to Improve Program, I'm actually going to buddy that up with our thrift store. I'm launching a program so that beyond just helping people get their schooling and certificates, we're actually going to create a program that's a on-the-job training program where they can go to the thrift store, get put on a schedule, and begin to show that they can manage their lives and live up to a set schedule, work schedule. Phase two, we'll be moving them to more of a customer service role, where they'll interact with our customers, answer questions, help guide customers through the store. And then, step three will really be the graduation step is where they move to actually working the register, so they'll be responsible for cash or coming out change. When they graduate this program, they will be able to walk, well, not walk, but drive shortly down the road to Walmart, or they can come to any grocery store that's in any of the counties and have this certificate of the completion of our program, but I will vouch for their ability once they pass through this. So, this is something I'm building that's going to be new. We're, I'm really promoting a greater push for outreach. We're based in Elizabeth City. Elizabeth City is a city here, so it's easy to get really busy in Elizabeth City. But much of our focus has been that, and much of our client needs have come directly from Elizabeth City. But as I mentioned a couple times, I serve six counties. Gates County being one of them. You will see me. I will be at the Rotary, we're going to try to get a booth at the Rotary, well, Merchant Mill Pond days, well, I'm going to try and work with them and do that. To me, my job is to run the organization, but really is to be out and talking to people, letting them know what we do, how we do it, and how we can help. You know, it could be anyone, it could be someone that the Commissioners know that might need help. So, you know, if you don't know what we're doing on the services we offer, we're just offering these things and they're not being utilized in the best of the ability. We have seen a slight decrease in numbers. I'd like to think, I'm an optimist, so I'd like to think positively that there's less abuse going on, but I do know that our outreach has kind of slowed down a little. We haven't been out in communities as much. So, guess what? I told my team already, we're changing that. They have a mandate to get out in front of everyone, just like I'm doing. So, we're going to do that. We have a new website coming, it's going to have brand-new features, new help features. It's really to connect. A lot of younger folks text. We're making that part of our new launch, because my daughters will pick up the phone and text me twice as fast as they would pick up the phone and call me. So, it's another way to reach the younger generation. They're suffering from the same things. And teen dating always seems to be a big push, too. Teen dating is happening a lot, and it's scary, the younger and younger abusive relationships are starting. So, we're launching a new program on that. The partnerships, the new programs, all these things are what you can expect from me in the next year. You can expect to see me not just today, but throughout the year, and I plan on being a stranger. You know, I want to be here to answer questions and to also provide updates on what's happening, and just to keep the County Commissioners involved and in the know, and know what's happening at Hope Line, because we want to serve Gates County the best we can, and the best way I see to do that is to be out there and present to you. So, thank you again. I appreciate your time this morning. That's everything I have. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, but otherwise, I do have an appointment back in Elizabeth City, I know Dr. Weiner does, too, so I'm going to stick around for when he speaks, and then I think we're both going to get out of here. So, I don't mean to be rude, but we have to be back for another engagement down there. So, can I answer any questions or?
Well, thank you for coming and for the services you provide. I know Doris Hawkins, I believe, has been on your board for years.
Yes, absolutely.
And she is one of our services. And certainly, I know there are numerous organizations in the county that donate to Hope Line yearly.
Ms. Oftlet, we have another Gates County resident that's on our board now, Conyel.
Conyel, that's right, yeah.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
What is the average longevity of citizens that may come to you, you know, state residential housing?
Very good question. And I don't have a better answer other than it really varies. It's per the situation. On average, I mean, we might have people there for two or three weeks. We've had people there for as many as five months to really, you know, terrible situation, kids also, but it really is.
Not over a year.
Oh, no, not over a year. No, it's not a long-term solution, but we do help, that Power to Improve Program does help people, our clients, get on their own. So, we will help them, give them the first month, turn it on utilities, we'll help with some of those payments, to get them on their own, to get them out of a dangerous situation. But no, our shelter service isn't long-term shelter, it's an emergency temporary shelter, but then we do work through the Power to Improve to help get them back to normal life. Yes, sir.
Well, okay. Thank you for coming, and we thank you for the services you provide for our region.
My pleasure. Thank you for having me, I appreciate it.
Good to meet you, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay, well, all right. Ooh. Wow. Okay. COA President.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Want to start off by giving some kudos to Alamo Hope Line. As you've heard this morning, we have partnered with them for quite a while. We're very happy with the work that they do for our students, and we've got their billboards posted on every bulletin board on campus so that if these students have problems, they know who to contact and get it done quickly. About nine months ago, I had the pleasure to stand in front of you, I think the meeting that time was in the building a couple doors down, to introduce myself as the new president for College of the Alamo. I've been there for a year and three months now. Meant to get back here, see you in spring, and unfortunately, spring got really busy on me, so I'm just not getting back. I apologize for that, but I can promise you that in the future, you'll be seeing me in the fall and the spring both. When I talked to you the first time, we talked about the value of a college education and what COA can do for our students. Today, I want to focus a little bit more, very quickly, on where COA is now, and what we've got planned for the next couple of years. Let's start with enrollment. And there's two ways that colleges look at enrollment. One is the head count, basically the number of students coming through the door. The second is full-time equivalent, or FTE. The FTE is the state's measure of what the amount of work the college is doing. If we have three students who are taking part-time loans, then the count may be as one student, if you add them all together. Last year, on the fall of 17 and spring of 18, COA was up by 5% in head count and 3.5% in FTE. Those are not extremely exciting numbers until you take into account that the state as a whole was down last year. COA was up, the rest of the community colleges and the state were down. We are doing our mission. We're serving our students. We're generating more FTE, and that's going to show in my budget this year so that I'm able to do a few more things that are good for my students as well this year. New programs, we've got an agribusiness program that's starting this fall. That's designed as a transfer program to North Carolina State University. The vast majority of the agribusiness programs in the state at the community college level are not designed as transfer programs. They're designed as a junior, get your thesis degree, and you're done. If you want to go to North Carolina State afterwards, you'd have to start all over again. Our program's not designed that way. It's designed to do two years at COA. You go to North Carolina State University, you start a junior. Starting next fall, we're looking at an associates in emergency medical services. As I've gone around and talked to various boards throughout the Southern County service area, the one constant I've heard from almost every county is the need for more emergency medical services training. So, we're happy to be working on that for next fall as well. Got a couple of construction projects running on campus in Elizabeth City. We've just finished the renovation of the formerly art center. The ribbon cutting for that will be on August 16th, and it's in conjunction with our season kickoff. So, if you want to come down and buy some season tickets to our plays, and we'll get you a ribbon cutting as well. It's on August 16th in the afternoon. Also renovating our library at Elizabeth City campus. The library was the second oldest building on campus and had not been, not much had been done to it in the time it had been built. Basically, we've taken North Carolina bond money and stripped out the library completely right down to the outer walls. It started all over again. The reason we're doing that, that library was about 40 years old. In the last 30 years, the change in educational technology has completely redesigned libraries. Just in the last 10 years, the change has been phenomenal. At the end of this year, we'll be finished with construction by December. Fingers crossed. It stops raining, maybe we'll get there. And then, by March, we should be through with installing the new technology, getting the furniture, all the finishing touches done, so that by the end of this academic year, our library will be up to the standards of where it needs to be to serve our students. Finally, I just want to reiterate COA's profound gratitude to the Gates County Commission. We appreciate what you do for the college, and be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, it has meant a lot to a lot of our students, as well as senior citizens and anyone in between to go back to school and get, pick up their his degrees. Any questions?
I have a couple.
Certainly.
Our high school counselors, do you think that they are fully informed on this agribusiness program to push that forward to some of our students?
They should be. I have fact that I have staff who go out from my student services area to work with each high school in the service area. I don't know for sure which one of my counselors is tied to your high schools, but I do know there's somebody in your high school letting your people know what's going on.
Because, you know, beginning of the year is probably would be a great time for maybe, if we had some interested kids, could take a field trip to COA. Is it a new, is a new program?
A new program, it's starting in a couple weeks.
I think that'd be a great idea to talk to our counselors, and I think they may know, some kids may know early on that that's what they want to do, and seniors, you know, that may, whatever.
I agree. Can I follow up on that? I'm actually in the process of changing the way we work with our high schools. We had two different groups coming out to talk with high schools. One from my student services area, which worked with seniors who were thinking of coming the next year as regular students. And then, another group of people from the college who came out to talk to the high schools about doing enrollment.
Yep.
That was crazy, to be honest with you. I've got two different people coming to talk to the same set of counselors about two different things. And the counselors want to talk about COA. They don't want to talk about doing enrollment today and regular transfer tomorrow. So, I'm changing all of that, and my student services area will be responsible for all contact with the high schools moving forward.
That's a good idea. The other thing, I was curious, do you know what your price tag is going to be on that library?
Total price tag, the construction part, I believe is around $2.4 million, but the technology that goes in it and the furniture is another $600,000, $700,000.
Any additional questions?
No questions, Matt Carroll, but certainly a comment. The transfer you're talking about from the states, from the students to maybe North Carolina State or some other, is there a loss of credits that you're looking at or?
In other states that I've worked at, it's my fifth state, I can't hold a job apparently. I bounce around all of the places. In most of the states I've worked in, the state has had a requirement that if you design a transfer program from a community college to a university, there will be no loss of credit. North Carolina doesn't have that. There's not a connection between the community colleges and universities. I think it's something we're missing. We designed this program originally, we went to North Carolina State and said, can we do this with you? Will you help us design this? And so, we've done it intentionally with their input, so that they signed off on everything and said, yes, when my students finish our courses, there will be no loss of credit when we go to North Carolina State.
Very good. Thank you.
Once again, thank you for coming, and I know that doing enrollment is very popular with students at high school.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for coming, and your services that you give to our community.
Thank you.
Okay, has anyone else signed up for the Knights delegation? So, we'll move on to our administrative reports, starting with our county manager.
This is for June 21st through July 23rd.
Most of my time in June and July has been spent working with finance. Now, the courthouse roof project for this building has been completed and signed off on. Financing has been secured for the central middle school project. Work is still progressing on the wastewater project. Construction is still continuing on the west wing of his store courthouse. And I conduct a training along with Kristi Bynum from the Gates County employees on MTLA on June twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. Do you have any questions?
The courthouse roof has been signed up, signed up, um, when can we start getting these?
We have issued contracts this morning. But that will be a year-long process because it's more than ceiling tiles. It will be, includes renovation of these walls because of damage from leaks, ceiling tiles for the entire building, as well as painting in certain areas of the building.
Going on the court schedule or?
Uh, we're going to do our best to work around it. I mentioned it to Commissioner Freeman previously, and I've spoken briefly with her before. I need to speak with the judges to let them know that they walk in, no one's going to work on court days, but that the walls might-
Both.
Might be psychedelic.
They might not have the panels up because of construction.
But it would be nice to see new ceiling and paint that make the building look good up again.
As far as the wastewater project, we're actually already, already working now because I haven't seen-
We're working out at the spray field. They have finished everything with honey pot, they've installed everything along Highway one fifty-eight. And today at one o'clock, there will be a meeting that Timmy Hitchbest will attend. I will attend if we're finished, but with Mike McAllister and EnviroTech to get an additional update on the project. But they're working on the spray field itself.
The, along with the land property, is there about a pretty, I see all of these concrete plots. I don't know exactly what are those.
Can you explain those?
It's an engineer design-
You'll, you'll need to come up here.
I knew you wanted to come in with it.
Yeah, I know, you're on the top of course.
Don't come in, I hope. I hope.
They are over-engineered, design erosion control.
Did you say over-engineered?
Yes, sir.
So, so what are we going to do to bring it to the right standard?
Those will disappear at completion of the project.
Yeah, but it looks like they're above, maybe six, seven inches above ground.
They're, they're catch basins that theoretically, when heavy rains, the sediment will run through those blocks, which are filled with rock to catch the sediment, and the water continues down to the swamp.
And they're going to continue to stick above ground like that?
They will be disassembled and removed at the completion of the project, once established, grass proof.
It's temporary.
Yeah, okay.
That's good, isn't it?
Yeah, I was wondering about this too.
I guess so.
Thank you. Okay, any additional questions? Okay, Mrs. Lane is not with us.
None. Before you, in the pile before you, they left the tax report. It was printed literally at nine thirty this morning.
She's not here because her father had surgery. It's happened surgery today.
So the tax report, if you have any questions, you'll need to contact her directly. As I was not provided any information. And Ms. Chaves is working in the office right now. Also at your space, you have before you an updated listing of properties that's been sent to Zikea. As Ms. Lane indicated in an email yesterday, there's been over ten thousand dollars in payments received after people received their notices that were being sent to the foreclosure. Those are the properties that are highlighted. One of the properties that is highlighted has filed Chapter eleven bankruptcy. So you cannot enforce any sort of sale or any sort of lien against the property at this time.
And that's the one at the top in yellow, that's filed for bankruptcy.
Gentlemen, I inquired, while you weren't at it, I inquired about the first highlighting one, the Ender Soul Financial. That's one Natalie just said is in Chapter eleven, that's the property there, across from the Commerce Center. That house, that's a two-story house, that's that property.
That suggestion to the community build that?
Um, yeah, like I said, yeah, what settlement, uh, Damon's program.
Well, Lisa, we have gotten some action from the elders, and hopefully we'll continue to get more and get some of these off of the books. And I did read a book that three cases were taken to district court in June, and they're trying to move ahead about getting some of these, that Lincoln County's taken care of. Any additional questions? Okay, moving along. I believe this must have hit, has back with us to talk to us about his, the weather has not been kind to you. So if you would like to come forward, I think you have a, in the six-month about the water department.
Broke down last year, two thousand seventeen, January through June. Total for, as you can see in here, installed two leaks repaired, pipe leaks repaired with rainfall, number of days of rain, and workdays available in that timeframe. I figured it'd be easier to compare if you were looking for comparisons in those six-month periods.
And this, this is when we changed and put the meters back in?
January first was the start of that.
And January is when we had all the cold weather, I believe, that was, I mean, zero degrees.
Yes.
And you can't do anything with this.
Yes, ma'am.
How are you coming with some of those long-term problematic leaks? Like at Steve Parker's and at Keys Crossroads and third?
The Parker one, I noticed they finally moved the mailbox about three weeks ago. So that one will actually get put on the list. Currently, we're fighting, trying to get some meters installed. We went and tried to put two in, we managed to get one put in at the end of last week. The second one we went to, we managed to dig down and expose the pipe, could never clear the pipe to put someone in the hole, kept collapsing and folding in on us, so the ground, we're in the ground tables up so high. And right now, digging's pretty much irrelevant.
But we will see some progress on some of those long-term.
When Mother Nature cooperates, it's most definitely.
Okay.
Tim over in White Oak Road comes into one thirty-seven.
Mm-hmm. That one is, is still, it's going in the ditch, it's not causing any issues. So that one is not that high of a priority, I've checked on it multiple times, it's not gotten any worse, so.
I've seen you new flags out there.
Yes, so, I mean, we're keeping it on the radar, it's, we've got some other things that we're going to present. We fixed a few leaks that we bumped to edge, that they were causing erosion at the side of the road and causing asphalt to buckle a little bit. But we're, we're blowing away and knocking the long-term list down one or two at a time and maintaining our new leaks popping up.
Is it working out that they've been reported and putting on the list? Um, I mean, that process is moving smoothly?
It still has some room for improvement because of the new system of Edmonds, they don't have the ability to print work orders. Where towards the end, we had established a system of printing work orders and actually get paper copies of, of leaks reported. Now it's an email or a verbal or a phone call, and we've created a book at the plant that we log everything in.
Now you can have access to Edmonds if you would like to do an electronic one.
Correct.
We can discuss that. I think that would be good to go ahead and have it. And that will be an additional charge because right now, we, I'm not sure if we have enough users for those modules. Just so you're aware of that, if you see a change in budget.
Well, I still think it's worth to have a, we could do it like privately keep a list. Okay, any questions? Okay, we hope Mother Nature will be a little bit more cooperative.
That's the reason I added the, the days of rain, not just volume, and as far as the frequency. So it kind of shows, you know, your workdays available, one day's difference between one hundred twenty-five and one hundred twenty-six. But if you look at days rained in two thousand seventeen was forty days, two thousand eighteen, we had rain on fifty-six days. So fifty-six days of rain out of one hundred twenty-six potential workdays. And you add in reading meters and doing lockouts on top of that. So your production days in the field are kind of limited.
Well, we can just hope that it starts drying up and hopefully get ICLAM. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to do our regular testing for seven inch contamination so far.
Yes, sir, that's, I do monthly bacterial logical samples, quarterly.
You will? Have, have we experienced anything out of limits the last six months?
No, sir.
Everything is, and what is it, is it only two percent or something like that?
It depends on what parameters you're talking about. You have disinfection byproducts, nitrates, nitrates, bacteria, coliform.
So you haven't had any?
No, sir.
The last six months?
I've had, in the last ten years, I've had a very few bacterial logical samples that come back positive and then retakes show that it was a contamination with the, either the collection or the lab messed up because everything come back clean.
All right, well, we know that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the departments? As you see, we have a, in our package up here, some information from the U of Fire Department, Billy, would you like this letter?
The report's on the back, while he's getting ready. You also have one from Gates in your notebook or Lane at your desk. If you picked it up before yesterday, it's Lane at your desk.
What you're speaking of, I guess is a semi-annual report. Each, each fire department is requested to turn in a semi-annual report. And I think of with Gates and you will turn that in so far. And it just tells how much money we have, we took in last year, where it came from, what the expenses were. It just breaks the dice, and it's very easy to understand what we're doing at each department. Another thing that we have concerning the fire department, we have the ISO ratings, insurance ratings test this year. And Sunbury, Gates, and you will participate in any tests this year. Sunbury and you will improve their rating to a five, which is about as good as a rural volume that fire department will ever get. And Gates will improve theirs to a six. And what all this means is that your home loan policy, your rate on your home loan policy is reduced.
Well, congratulations to those departments, and thank you for the report. I know the one from Hopkville is on its way.
The Hopkville is scheduled next spring, so that's it.
Oh, I mean, their semi-annual report.
Oh, yeah.
Someone talk to me.
Do we, now, if we don't have a, what might call an imposed deadline to receive these reports, they run out of semi-annual?
It's after the June thirtieth, and then after the summer start of?
Do you think would be, if it were a good idea to send a letter at maybe, at a certain date?
I don't know if in the past, or finance has, I know I have not. With all other responsibilities, we can ask that to be done. But as we've discussed before, even if they don't provide it, you cannot legally, from what we get, withhold their funds.
I don't know what board we think about sending a letter in August fifteenth or something saying we've not received your semi-annual report, could you send that, whatever, just a?
I think it would be a good idea, of course, as Natalie just said, there's no penalty for not doing it. There's no punishment or anything like that for not doing it. But the semi-annual report, it helps, helps us have the chance to see what, how much it costs to operate a fire department. It also helps each individual department to see where your money is being spent, what you've got coming in, what you have going out. Keeps, keeps everything open, everything transparent.
It would be, it would be convenient if they came in close enough together to, to compare them. Not, not really comparing the departments, but, you know, you know, seeing what the cost to, to perform would be. I would be in favor of every, say, every August fifteenth, any fire department we have received from, that that be a standard procedure.
You would also have to send one then in February fifteenth.
Be a good idea too.
Absolutely, for March.
It'd be everywhere if you wait one month.
I think it'd be probably very well for departments to send their ISOs in too, showing the rating in their areas. I know the actual one through it last year.
If we just, if we did that for, you know, another thing too, fire departments, you know, they're going to change their, who their fire chief is, and who the treasurer and secretary is. So it could be helpful to them, you know, somebody coming in, you go, oh, I've got to get that in. I think it'd be a benefit to, to us and, and to the fire departments. Matt Chairman, I would ask that board members will share their thoughts, I know we're hearing some of them.
Do you want to make a motion or support that?
For some reason, I'm thinking that, I've seen that written somewhere.
We've talked about it before.
Yeah, but I think what it would be, that they're supposed to submit financial reports.
It's in our budget ordinance.
Yeah, we're here.
Our budget ordinance says anyone who receives, any outside agency that receives funding has to submit their own to financial statement before they get money for the following year.
I figured I'd see it written somewhere, but I can't remember. So you're reminding me of it.
Matt Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on the matter. I move that we instruct our county manager, going forward twice a year, August fifteenth and-
February fifteenth.
February fifteenth, to send a, a letter to all of our county fire departments that have not submitted their form, to ask them to submit them at that time.
Motion's made to send letters to fire departments who have not turned in their semi-annual or annual reports on their fire, on their budgets, to turn those in, to remind them on, by the letter of August fifteenth and February fifteenth.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, seconded and discussed. Okay, all those in favor of directing the county manager to send letters on August fifteenth and February fifteenth to our departments who have not submitted their budgets. All those in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so county manager's directed.
Thank you, Natalie.
You're welcome. Okay, we'll be back, those, all the administrative reports. We do have a public hearing today, do we need to take a stretch break?
Yes, ma'am, that would be beneficial.
Okay, well, it is, we want to start back in five minutes, so if that's possible.
Five seconds.
Five seconds. Okay, at this time, we need to go back to, remaining to the approval of amendments for the regular meeting on July second, twenty eighteen. There are three grammar corrections, I mean, three corrections to the minutes that have been turned in. So we need to go back to approve that set of amendments as corrected.
Okay.
Do I have a motion concerning that?
Matt Chairman, I'll make a motion that we go back to the approved minutes. Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that, uh, we go back to the approved minutes, uh, and then we make the corrections that were noted.
Okay. Motion has been made. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
A motion's been made. Department second, in a discussion. Uh, okay, manager's taking care of the corrections and, uh, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, so we have re-approved those amendments as corrected. Thank you. Um, at this time, I need a motion to go into a public hearing for the twenty eighteen CDVG Neighborhood Revitalization Application.
Second.
Motion's been made and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, sir.
My name is Monica Barnett. I'm working with the county on your housing finance agency housing programs. I'm working with county manager. I think I've been with you one time before, about a year or so ago. Um, there is another grant opportunity we'd like to bring to your attention. The, um, the North Carolina Department of Commerce has something called the CUBG NR, Neighborhood Revitalization Program. Of course, CUBG money originates at HUD, so it, it has a, it's a character of its own versus other funds. But it is available. There's ten million dollars available in this funding cycle. Uh, the maximum grant request is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Anytime you apply for CUBG programs, you need to have two public hearings. This is the first of those, hopefully, two public hearings. And the purpose of this public hearing is to announce a program to the public so that, and to gain input from the public into what they would like to see into a CUBG application. The, um, I'll take a few minutes and go through some of the eligible activities. The CUBG NR program is, um, housing, a housing-based program. There are housing improvements for owner occupied, low moderate income homeowners. You also can do infrastructure programs where they are in support of, of housing. An infrastructure program by itself would not qualify. But if we can justify it being in support of housing, that would qualify as infrastructure. There are also other activities, such as a senior center, uh, housing for homeless, housing shelters for victims of domestic violence, which I gave my notes to Dwight Doolittle a little earlier today. Transitional housing, community facilities, neighborhood facilities, and recreational facilities. These are eligible activities where you could have a housing program and you could have one of these activities on to that housing program. The question most of the time, however, is anytime you have CUBG funding, you have to have low moderate income benefit. And it has to benefit at least fifty-one percent low moderate income people. If you're doing scattered housing for low moderate income, obviously, that's a hundred percent low moderate income people. Uh, if you are doing, uh, let's say, a recreational facility, you need, would need to work on and determine the service area for that program and then make sure the people within that service area are low moderate income. And third type of classification for senior centers, for transitional housing, domestic violence, and homeless. Those populations are considered low moderate income by definition by HUD, so you don't have to work with the, um, the benefit issues. The, um, in our other programs that we've been managing here in Gates County, I've been, we've been working with the housing committee. Uh, we've got a, quite a few houses that are under occupied, but were in such an advanced state of deterioration, they wouldn't qualify for the housing finance agency program. So we do have that need that exists here in Gates County. This program does not require a local match. You may receive some extra points if you have a local match associated with it, but it's not required. And as I said, it has two public hearings and applications are due September twenty-eighth. The, um, I'm, have attached to your, to my notes, a, um, this is an excerpt out of the application guidelines. And I'm not going to get down in weeds with this, uh, because y'all, y'all can read it, obviously. But this, this is a checklist out of the application, um, of eligible activities that we can, that we can work with. One of the ones is the housing development activity. Uh, this, for instance, could put in water and sewer to develop a housing project or housing construction that would benefit fifty-one percent low moderate income. That's something usually develops over time. Uh, it can acquire, uh, dilapidated properties and either rebuild in the same, same location or move to another location. It can obviously rehabilitate property. It can be scattered site housing. It can be going into a neighborhood to fix a neighborhood and fix all of the, um, needs within that neighborhood. So it's very much a wide open activity. Uh, we'll take any input from this public hearing. Uh, I'll work with the, uh, the manager's office and this manager, anybody else, if you think we need to, uh, to partner with to gather information. And then try to come back to you with some sort of a recommendation when you're September board meetings.
Okay, and the maximum any, anything you can receive is three quarters of a million?
Yes, ma'am. Well, you were, you were, you can apply for up to seven fifty, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And you, you can see it's a, it's a competitive program. So as, as I meet with your staff and we try to come up with ideas, there may be lots of good ideas, but we'll have to put together what we think is our best opportunity and our best package to compete to probably try to get money. Um, one of the other things that, um, that can help your application is a local commitment activity. I'm not making a recommendation to you. Uh, however, if, if we can work and find things that you're going to spend money on anyway, put that activity into a grant program, use your money as local match and get a hundred percent grant funding for your activity. Those are kind of things we'll try to weave into your application.
So it sounds like that you would be assisting us in the grant writing, uh, application.
Yes, sir.
Give us a little bit of advice there.
That, um, I have, uh, since nineteen eighty-two, been in the grant writing and administration business. And what we'll do is we'll actually prepare for you and no cost to you, but we recognize it's highly competitive activity. And, uh, we feel like if we've got skin in the game, it helps give us a little bit motivation to try to get a good application, put it together.
So in that application process, um, our housing, uh, association, I guess, uh,
Fours.
Yeah, come in, yeah. When Commissioner Jordan serves on, um, in, at the application, uh, when the application is submitted, would you need to know who your candidates were or how many candidates you had at that time?
Ideally, yes. And just for instance, this is a program that was funded in the last cycle. The county viewed a housing problem and they proposed to replace four mobile homes, under occupied mobile homes, and two under occupied houses. And they went ahead and identified those, got their certifications, et cetera, and put them in the application. So.
You would need that type of information in the application?
Yes, sir.
All right, what would be the start date of, uh, when would we actually receive funds or, or be able to start with the program?
I would anticipate, first of all, this is a wild guess, depending on the sponsor of the Department of Commerce. But if we send, send the applications in, in September, I would suspect it would take probably at least two, if not three months for them to rank all the applications and make an announcement. So I would anticipate you would get something in the first of the year notification. Uh, then you would go through, there's a startup period of doing policies. It's HUD money, which makes it a little, little bit more complicated. Starting up policies, uh, environmentals, environmental studies on the house or whatever activities you have. So I imagine that would take the spring and then go into the summer.
If you were, were awarded X number of dollars, what timeframe would it have to be spent in? Is there?
Typically, it's thirty months.
Thirty months, okay.
And we could have multiple projects like even the wastewater, uh, system we're putting in, we could, a portion of that in as well as, uh, that's, that's our house.
Yes, sir, as long as.
No, that, that, because the wastewater is not, I'm sorry, the wastewater is not for residential use.
You span along each one?
The, the wastewater is not designed for residential use. I'm looking at Timmy to make sure, because he can confirm with Mike this afternoon, it's only for commercial because of the way the system is designed. They cannot tap on, is that correct?
They can, they can tap on anywhere that's gravel. Will Lane is forced man, going back to the new spray facility, that can be tapped on, but it's going to be a higher expense to the residents in order to tap on to that. In the event that their initial commerce part, the phase two and three with the multi-home living and family lot, if that ever come into play, I think the CDBG, that money could potentially go if that was only housing or multi-home housing. It could be applied in that situation, possibly.
But based on the applications that, I know that housing committee has sent and the ones that McDavid and associates have reviewed, there is a strong need for scattered site housing.
Yeah, well, we have plenty of that. I mean, I.
We're not lacking.
We're not lacking.
And also, the new system, the amount that is permitted for wouldn't allow so much growth.
Alright, so we probably not, uh, include our wastewater budget.
The, the, the paper says it's, it's eligible and just in support of housing, but you also need to work with the system requirements to make sure that how your system would work.
But, uh, as Mr. Jordan, I, I know we have a lot of, of eligibility in the county and needs.
This is helpful.
Certainly, it'd break it up a little faster if it helped in something.
And, and one other comment that I'll, we'll move down the agenda. Um, I, I, I think as a grant writer, that typically these programs are benefited by partnerships of some sort. Whoever, whoever the county, county can partner with as far as activities. I think some way it benefits from, um, possibly having some multiple activities, housing and say one other thing. So we'll work towards that, um, looking at those possibilities, and I think the county manager can help us quite a bit with that.
And for this list to be completed by August, by September?
I, I would, I think your next, um, board meeting may be September fifth, is that? Is that right?
Yes.
Is that right? Would it be, and if it's appropriate, I'd like to try to have a, a second public hearing at that, um, at that meeting, of which we would present to you proposed, the proposed activities for application.
And since Lieutenant Holly is here, I think that would be a good item to put on our agenda for August, uh, to provide names, uh, possibly for the revitalization program.
Okay, any additional questions?
No questions, but Charlie, when you mentioned the second meeting, that would fulfill your, your obligation for two meetings?
That would fulfill the obligation for the two public hearings. And it also.
And we had to have those before we could apply, so that didn't have it.
Those are regulatory, and then if you had any other, other issues associated with it, you still have another meeting to discuss those, you would have met your regulatory requirement, too.
Would you need to be here on that year?
I would, would plan, if, if the Lord willing, I plan to conduct that, I'll put that here.
Okay.
So we're not very able to wait to that, I figure.
Now, this is a public hearing.
Okay, any other, any public comments? Okay, none. Um, no additional questions or comments from the commissioners? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to come out of public hearing.
So move. Second.
Motion's been made. Department second in a discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, we're out of public hearing. Now, do we need to take any formal action as a board?
Just, just proceed, both of you, what you did.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, before he leaves, do we need to check his schedule for the next public hearing? Go ahead.
I've, I've penciled it in on my calendar.
You have?
He's already penciled it in.
So we see, the county manager knows what that is. Alright, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, number, uh, seven, old business, one item, uh, the historic courthouse.
We've had an ass for a spreadsheet, uh, how much money has been allocated thus far on the historic courthouse project. So that is what has been provided to you.
And they are moving along with the, uh, West Wing, they've got, yeah.
Phase, I met with James Andrews yesterday, what we are calling phase one, it's just about complete, well, it's pretty much complete. There's a few odds and end things. Many of the things in the phase one will be moved to phase two since he will be, since we've had a discussion about different items and that will save us money because there are a few things budgeted in phase one that, since he's able to, with his timeline, go ahead and move into phase two, he will not have to do, such as putting down the floor and then coming and pulling it back up, the subflooring back up, so that someone can come in and put in HVAC.
Well, I noticed in these, uh, that most of his budget items have come in under, under budget.
Yes.
Which is always nice to hear.
How about demolition?
I know.
That's seventeen thousand dollars under that.
Yes.
So that was very pleasing. Too sick.
Well, Natalie, I had, uh, a local individual ask me this week, yeah, this week, about bidding for the inside of courthouse.
And what's more specific, do you mean by bidding for the inside?
Um, I don't know if he was inquiring about that wing or if he was inquiring about some overall, I'm, I'm sure.
We have a contract with Andrews to do that entire west wing.
Okay, all of it, okay.
And if any of the other projects that we will need to fix, because there have been some issues that caused some damage on the inside, when the roof leaks, we got some other repairs, Crystal will be taking care of getting contracted to do those.
I, I don't know if he missed, missed it or whatever, what it followed.
Well, no, that, that's not been put out for those types of things.
But the person that asked me is somebody that we paid to do some stuff, so somebody's done some work for us in the courthouse.
Well, that narrows it down, but, um, no, the contract with Andrews was a continuation to continue that.
Alright.
Okay, so all questions answered? Okay, moving on to new business. Uh, we have number seven, Sheriff Jordan's request for additional.
Sheriff Jordan is not here. We spoke last week, so I'm assuming my discussion will come to clear whatever issue he was going to bring before you today.
Okay, so we'll move on to budget amendments, uh, that we've had.
And you'd like, I can go ahead and go over those?
Yes, yes, I just, go ahead.
What number?
Okay. Number four.
Number four. And if you'd like, we can vote on four and five together since they are both pulling forward money from fund balance. Number four is to move money from fund balance for a continuing grant for the solar water conservation for the stream to green removal in the amount of twenty-four thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And amendment five is to pull forward money for various emergency management grants that have been received and will be expended this fiscal year in the amount of seven thousand four hundred and three dollars.
And, um, both, uh, both amendments are dealing with grants?
Correct.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve amendment, budget number four and five.
So I have, okay, motion's been made, second, in a discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The amendments four and five are approved. At our table, we have six and seven. These have been sent to us by email, previous as well, printed copy.
Number six, if, do not go by the one that was in the toilet for calls yesterday. Um, Ann Holly was able to provide me with some information that changed the amendment that's in your book. So please, you look at the one that's on the table. Number six is to appropriate five thousand dollars from fund balance to cover the cost of the Medicaid audit. You have that information on the, on the back, in your book, on the back of number six. There's a letter from Oliver and Jenkins and they, even though. six, there's a letter from Holly and Jenkins, and they, even though it was dated June fifteenth, they did not receive this till the end of July. They said that this year, because the way the state has requested the Medicaid audit be completed, it required a separate contract, and they did not send out or even bid in their original package for Medicaid because there are a way on the state to approve the process on which to audit the Medicaid funds that were received. So, their audit request is, or proposals between twelve and fifteen thousand dollars. We need an additional five thousand dollars from fund balance to cover the fifteen thousand dollars. So, amendment six is to appropriate the five thousand dollars into professional services of Medicaid, I mean, excuse me, professional services of the DSS line, because we can be reimbursed from the state for that. Number seven is to move seven thousand dollars from the professional services audit line under administration to the professional services line of DSS for a total of twelve thousand dollars. If there's, if the audit costs more than twelve thousand dollars, I have budgetary authority to move the remaining three thousand dollars into the DSS budget. And the reason we want to move it into the DSS budget is because that line can be reimbursed by the state. There will not be the full amount, but it will, and I'm not sure, is it fifty percent? I forgot to check.
Yes, I would only say forty.
But, but none of them are less than fifty percent that are reimbursable lines.
Well, it's better to get half than none.
Yes.
So, you can recommend...
You can vote on both.
Six and seven together?
Yes.
Okay, this is to try to take care of the Medicaid portion of the audit that the state's put some new requirements on.
Yes.
This is in our email, yeah. Now, I read the email and I understand it, and I'd like to make a motion to approve budget amendment six and seven.
Do I have a second?
Second motion, Madam Chairman.
Motion's been made, second, in a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, okay. Thank you, and I'm glad that it is reimbursable to a certain extent.
Yes.
Okay, now we have Patrice coming up to discuss her, yes, safety policy, and it was just, I mean, I could not put it down.
Patrice, it was so interesting.
I could.
I'm glad to hear that.
Which one?
Previously, we have had a plan that was called the SSPP, which was System Safety Program Plan, and because of FTA guidelines, it's now changed to System Safety Plan. And the beginning, the, the, the System Safety Plan has six plans included, and they were the Emergency Action Plan, Fire Prevention Plan, Preventive Maintenance Plan, Drug and Alcohol Policy, Security Plan, and the COOP Plan. In the SSPP, we already had the Preventive Maintenance Plan, Drug Alcohol Policy, and Security Plan, so those plans were pulled from that plan and put into this plan. I didn't have to make any change to it, they just, apart this plan. As for the COOP Plan, they had a, a shell for some of the things that they wanted in, and we had began a COOP Plan back when John Mendenhall was there, so I took those two and combined them into that plan. And the Fire Prevention is a new plan. Emergency Action is kind of the policy out of the Safety Plan previously. So, that's where we got the information. The additional information that I actually added was plan, parts of the plan out of the System Safety Program Plan, which was how we select employees, the required training, and some safety guidelines. I wanted to keep those, but I didn't want the whole SSPP because it was redundant since some of the things were moved to this item, so that's why I changed it to be the Gitch County Employee Selection Training and Safety Guidelines. And the, the reason that I wanted to have that plan approved as well is because those are programs that are required, but they were in that plan, so I would have had to write a new plan if I would not have moved them to this from that plan, so that was why I chose to do it this way. As a part of the SSP, it's a requirement that we come before you every year, and if there are any corrections, but we also have to come before you every year for whether there are corrections or not, and we have to re-sign the plan every year. If we have questions or if you want me to go over certain items, we have to do that.
Patrice, I've got one little editorial on it, and your Fire Prevention Plan, the pages are not numbered, but it's actually eight page in there.
Okay.
Bang, close to the bottom, the, next to the last bullet line there, I think that word, it says reptile immediately, I think you mean, I think that should be refiled.
I, I wondered about that, I thought reptile immediately, I thought, why would that matter?
On which page is it?
It's, it's right, right above, number, Roman numeral seven.
Okay.
You choose slightly refiled?
Yes.
I, I think that, that makes a little bit more...
So, it's refiled?
Yes.
And the only question I have is on the very first page, the pictures of the tires revealed there. Any significance to that?
No, it actually was just...
That was just a type cover page?
It was a shell plan at the same time, and I kept it for it.
Okay.
I do think it is, the plan is, is beneficial about the way in case of natural disasters or whatever is a nat, a catastrophic event that occurs, that we have a plan about coordination between all of the parts. I do like that part. In the lines of authority, who does what. And I had something highlighted, and it was just a type cover. Okay, yeah, and I'll show it to you, it's just where it's, the two words are redundant. As I went through, I found it highlighted.
I appreciate it.
Because I know you asked to get the font.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions?
Motion?
Yes.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt the Gates County Intercultural Public Transportation System Safety, Safety Plan, as presented with the noted correction.
I'll second the motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, motion's been made, second to, for to, for the Gitch Safety Policy Plan to be approved. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, okay, you have your plan, and I will give you this.
And I also need this page updated, yeah, the picture is, it's right here, so it's what we have assigned, what...
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think that concludes the new business. Comments, citizens' comments, does anybody want to sign up? That's all right. Number one, okay, commissioners' comments, we'll start, we'll start in the middle, Commissioner Jordan today.
All right, well, we just thank everyone for being here today. Thank, he actually came and made a presentation, and thank the board for going through the business of the town and the area, and efficient and effective. Everyone have a good day.
Okay, we'll go to Billy and we'll go top way.
I do thank everybody for attendance this morning and for the interest shown by everybody, and you being here and helping us, helps us to help you, and we just appreciate your presence.
Again, I'll reiterate what Billy said, Patrice, that your being here, number one, but secondly, is so important to have that wisdom and knowledge that brought forth to us, we have an opportunity to study material and look at material, but then to have folks come and actually tell us about it is so important, so we appreciate that, thank you.
Commissioner Owens?
Okay, well, it's good to be here today, and we do thank all our concerned citizens for being here, to voice their opinion, and we thank you that you're here in support of your commissioners. On TV here lately, I see that campaign season is heating up, and I guess that means it'll be heating up here locally, and so, anybody who'd like a Jack Owens, the county commissioner, sign in your yard, you can reach me by phone and we'll make that happen for you. Thank you everybody for being here.
I do like, like you for coming, I think today we had a lot of information, Admiral Hope lines and what service to make us citizens aware of, the COA, the opportunities that act provides to our citizens to offer the education, at a much cost-effective manner than it does for, go off to a four-year school. The CDBG grant is certainly wonderful news to our citizens that we can get that and help some of the inappropriating that we have in the county, and hopefully we can get that grant. So, there's a lot of positive things coming. Courthouse roof is fixed, work continues on the historic courthouse and the wastewater, so we have a lot of positive things occurring. Of course, we know around the corner, in a few weeks, kids will be going back to school, so we need to be with them and their parents and teachers and administrators, and hopefully we can see work begin there at Central Middle School. I assume that closing occurred on July twentieth?
No, July eighteenth.
Oh, July eighteenth, so that they can move forward. So, I, I was hoping they could get the, the launch and then done before school started, but might not be able to make...
They haven't been cooperating with that either.
Yeah, well, it has not cooperated. But listen, thank you for coming, have a great rest of the day, and we'll see you back here first of September. Okay, at this time, though, we will, we have closed session, so do y'all need to take a break or...
I'd like to go right into closed session.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we go into closed session, Madam Chairman.
Motion's been made, second, in a discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, as pursued to North Carolina General Statute one four three dash three eighteen eleven, we have closed session for legal...
Legal and personnel.
Matters. Thank y'all for coming.
Good evening, Brian.
Yeah. At this time, do I have a motion to come out of closed session?
So, load, second.
Motion been made, Department of State, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion...
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that the county manager, we have the county manager get in touch with our county attorney and present a letter that we discussed in closed session, and provide commissioners' comments on how we feel that the letter should be responded to based on his...
Okay, a motion has been made, do I have a second?
Second motion, Madam Chairman.
In a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.